And the Lord's Prayer. We're with the Lord's Prayer, Our Father.
Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory for all men. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item D on the agenda is Efficiency Smart Presentation. Sean?
Welcome, sir.
Thank you much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, first of all, my name is Sean Clement. Thanks for having me. I am the Director of Efficiency Smart. As a colleague just reminded me, I've been here 11 years in the program that is. I've had an opportunity to serve in a number of positions within it. And really, I'd love coming up to explain the program to folks because I understand it can be, at times, counterintuitive, at times confusing, and at times a little bit boring. Full disclosure, I will do my best to alleviate all three, but it will not be perfect. But I will do what I can. So I just wanted to come up today to talk to you about the program and where we are, because we are approaching a contract renewal time. I don't know who I asked for. Are you driving in the back there? Should I ask for the next slide? Okay, so as we think about an energy efficiency program, as folks who operate an electric utility, you have two ways to meet your power supply needs. You will buy power, but you can also reduce usage. And so, at the end of the day, whichever one you can do more cheaply or more cost effectively favors your city and how you get to operate that utility. So if you'll go to the next slide, I put some information up about some prices. The first column there, there's a lot of numbers. Sorry for those of you who don't like numbers as much as I do, but the first column there are the rates at which we have generated electrical savings over the past three years, our rolling average. And actually, those are higher values than we're used to seeing because that included some of the challenging years that came with the pandemic. So with that came a little bit higher cost for us per unit than we're used to seeing. In the next column, you'll see what we project for Napoleon, if you renew, at the end of this year, over the next three-year cycle. And in the third column there, you will see what the market looks like if you are going out to buy power on the market, what the average that is predicted by the folks at AMP's Power Supply Division, what they think you might end up paying on average for a megawatt hour and for your transmission and capacity prices. So let's talk about those for a second. The market, for those of us who are recently at the AMP conference, there's a lot of factors driving those prices up. That $77 number per megawatt hour is not a number we're used to seeing. We've been able to enjoy $30 to $40, sometimes $50 megawatt hour prices, so this number is a significant increase over past years. So that's helping, in my best interest, to make energy efficiency an even more attractive option for your utility. As far as transmission goes, those prices have been rising. They've been challenging. I'm sure you've heard about those in your electric committees. Those numbers continue to go up. They're about $6.37 for next year. Capacity is probably your cheapest price there and also the most stable. When that one goes up, we see it come down a little bit. It does a little bit of an up and down movement, but these other two lines we're seeing climb. And so, when energy efficiency, we cannot meet all of your power supply needs. We cannot reduce all of your usage. But we can do the inefficient part at the top, and we can do it very cost-effectively. So that's the point I want to start with, that this is the most affordable way to meet your power supply needs. But it comes with other benefits. The next slide indicates one of those benefits, and these are not benefits you get when you buy power supply from other sources, so these are all gravy on top. One is customer satisfaction.
Check, use a zoom in just a little bit. Oh, perfect. Thanks so much.
Okay.
Sorry.
No problem. And by the way, please feel free to interrupt me with questions or comments. I'm happy to handle them from here. Customer satisfaction, so this is a great way for your customers to lower their bills, to get information that they need to help them to understand their usage, to understand how to lower it if they need to or want to. It demonstrates your utility's investment back in the community, and I'm sure you all know that can be, at times, a challenging thing to do with an electric utility. And doing so actually improves the perception folks have of your utility, and it improves their loyalty and trust. And actually, what we've seen is their support of future decisions that you may need to make. And it really can generate a sense of community and pride. So we're pretty proud of that. If you go to the next slide, we just started with a new, we rolled out some new customer surveys in 2022, so be happy after y'all renew to come back and share with you some of that survey data more comprehensively. But one of the things we've already seen is that 83% of people who participated in the Efficiency Smart program have a more positive view of their utility. And just a spoiler, the other 17% had a same view. Nobody said they had a worse one. I do want to point that out. So it doesn't detract from anybody's view of their utility, but it can help improve the public perception of the utility you all operate on their behalf. Okay, next is customer engagement. This is how we achieve those customer satisfaction results. We do our best to operate as an extension of your utility and to sort of augment your staff. Joey Boston here is our account manager, is dedicated to Napoleon, and she works to try to partner with you and your staff to really help enhance our efforts. We have a lot of different ways to connect with customers. And again, we give them that information. We can also be a way to learn information from customers and from businesses that can provide a helpful or vital feedback loop to you as you operate your utility. And then finally, one of the most, one of the most favorite of the values that our program offers is also economic development benefits. As I'm sure you know what a lot of those benefits are, but if we can help your local companies lower their operating costs, they're more likely to stay here in town and contribute to a healthy electrical load. They are more likely to reinvest in themselves, which is a way of reinvesting in the town, creates jobs, taxes. I mean that in a good way in this context. And, you know, all the other things that we need for our cities to thrive. And it can be a way to help you attract new businesses to town, and I think you've all had experience with that over the last few years that you've been enrolled in the program. And, you know, one new thing we're seeing a lot more of is that companies are coming to us or to their cities, to their utilities, and saying, "I have corporate sustainability goals. I have mandates I have to meet from above, and I don't know how to do it." And a lot of folks don't. They may not have the staff on hand who can. We can help them. We can help them measure usage. We can help them set goals. We can help them prioritize projects to meet those goals. And that's a big factor in that, in those companies' satisfaction with the local utility and in your ability to perform successful economic development. So what is Efficiency Smart? It's gone on about, you know, what makes it great and why it might be useful to a local municipal utility. How do we do it? Well, this is the simplest way I've figured out to explain it. We are a hands-on service. We do not work from remote, you know, from afar. We get in-town, in-person, to work directly with your customers to help them reduce their usage. We do this by providing them with information and advice and financial incentives that they make on investments into technology that will reduce their usage. That will help change how they behave, maybe how they operate their company, and obviously, how the technology operates at their facilities or homes. We're going to measure the difference between before and after, and we're going to report that to you monthly. And just to point it out, AMP does hire a third-party verification company that checks our results annually and make sure that what we're saying is something you will fully realize. Who are we? Well, we are AMP's member, Service for Energy Efficiency. We have worked with over 65 member utilities in four states. Like I said, we have a lot of staff located in and near the communities that we serve. And I work for a company called VEIC. We have, I think, an over 15-year partnership with AMP, and it's been really great. And what we're good at, I like to describe to folks, is that we're good at designing solutions for the local market needs because every energy solution for every local market is going to be different, and we're good at figuring out how to do that. Okay, and we do that by improving. And one of the cool things about my experience of being here for 11 years is I've seen, frankly, there aren't a lot of municipal energy efficiency programs in the country. It's just not a very common thing you run into. But, and you have to learn how to do it. It's different than how you would run a state-run program, and we've really learned how to do it. We've added, in our last contract cycles, we added kilowatt goals to help with your peaks, to reduce those transmission and capacity costs. The longer we're here, the longer our partnership with the city, the more we build trust with the customers. The more the companies will let Joey in at the planning stage of the process. We'll actually get to that story in a little bit. But we've really learned how to do things. We've also done programs where we can target supporting spending locally. We run a lighting program where we bring bulbs to local stores to have them sell. That drives foot traffic to local stores and revenue to local stores. But on our slide here, it talks about some of the things that haven't changed. We have performance guarantees. We are very focused on delivering those. We're actually going to talk about those as well in a little bit. We try to do our best to be an objective third party. Just for the record, for anyone who may be confused, we don't sell product. We are not aligned. We are not paid by any distributors and those sorts of things. We are customer-first, vendor-second. They're an important part of our process, and they're an important partner, but we have to be customer-first, and we need to be, you know, a neutral and trustworthy third party. We also have a history of returning on investment greater than 100%. And, you know, we're going to talk a little bit about the challenges that came with the pandemic over this recent three-year cycle. And what it actually, one of the things that points out on the positive side is that even when the program doesn't thrive at the same level that we're used to, it still has a very strong return on investment. And when I was here in the last fall, we talked about how, even though being a little bit behind on goals, it was still a great return on investment. You're getting much more than, for every dollar you put in, you're getting a certain amount back. We'll talk about those here in a second. There have been folks who've asked me along the way, "Hey, we've been in this program for a long time." Napoleon's one of those communities. Is there still opportunity here? Is this still worth doing? Well, I've put together some of the savings that we have achieved as a program in 2015, 19, and 2022. The 2022 number is the highest. I'm super excited to see this, and it tells me two things. It tells me there is still an abundance of opportunity in our communities, even the ones we've been in the longest. It also tells me that in an inflationary market, your customers still have an appetite for energy efficiency because it means it gives them a way to control costs they may not have a lot of control over otherwise. So I'm happy to see this. On the next slide, one of the ways we do this is by, early on in the program, there's a healthy relationship we have with lighting projects. They're an easy way to introduce people to the program with a quick payback, a less invasive installation in their facility or home, something they might be able to do themselves in their homes. But we are seeing now more and more savings year over year coming from non-lighting technology as we are beginning to work with companies at a deeper and deeper level. I do want to talk, we had a recently have a, Tenneco was friendly enough to give us the blessing to share their story that we have, and we turned it into a case study. I think that's included in your packets in the more fully expressed version. But just some quick highlights from our partnership over the years, and this really speaks to that economic development value. They have, we've helped them reduce their energy usage by 30%, their peak demand by 32%. They've done 11 energy efficiency projects. Guess what they started with? Lighting. We've now moved on. We're working in, you know, we still go back to lighting where necessary, but we also work in compressed air and controls. This is saving them over the lifetime of these measures, $2.5 million. And one of their quotes is, "It helps Tenneco Napoleon remain competitive in a very competitive industry where every dollar counts." I think we've seen the value of that. The next is just, rather than offering you a sort of residential testimonial, we took all of our residential testimonials and compiled them into a Word cloud. I love the things it has to say about our program. I like that the biggest word is easy, and I like that it gives me a moment while you read it to have a sip of water. Thank you. Okay, so let's talk about, a little bit about where we're forecasting the contract results to go. Okay, great. Just had to get my bearings. So our current contract cycle that ends on December 31st of this year is on schedule to achieve in lifetime savings of the measures installed, almost 24,000 megawatt hours. That'll be an accrued value of about 4,400 summer kilowatts of savings. And this will result in almost two, little over $2.1 million in customer savings. We talked about return on investment a moment ago. The total program cost for you has been a little over $700,000 over the last three years. Those cost savings have come back, that will come back to you as a result of that, is over $1.4 million, which means to purchase the energy or end up paying for the transmission and capacity associated with that energy to, at the same amount that this contract is delivered, would cost you over $1.4 million.
Sean, just to clarify, it says lifetime savings achieved, so that's not for the last contract, the last three years?
It is for the work done over the last three years, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's not programmed to date. That's not the 12-year history.
Right, okay. That's why I wanted to clarify. When it said lifetime, I wasn't sure.
Good question, all the way back.
Question, fair question. Yeah, I find if we share the program-to-date numbers, they get so big, it gets harder to compute in the mind. It's a good problem to have. So this slide, I want to spend some time with. There's some good news here at the end of it. But the challenge is that the pandemic did stifle, early on, our ability to do some of our program activity. Very true. We talked about this last fall. It resulted in two things, a little bit lower spending and a little bit lower performance. And we know that you're used to, and frankly, we're used to, exceeding our goals and not needing to talk about minimum performance guarantees. But your existing contract does have performance guarantees for both goals at 70%. The good news is that we worked with AMP for a one-time solution around this pandemic challenge. We wanted to bring folks to a more consistent experience financially than that they had with the past so that, frankly, that they would give us another chance and come back for another contract and that we could deliver at the high levels we're used to doing. That's very much what we're trying to do. So now we added a layer of compensation above what's in the contract for any shortfalls to those two goals of up to 100%. So we're trying to make those whole up to 100%. So with that, we're currently ending, forecasting ending at 88% of the megawatt hour goal and 62% of the kilowatt goal. That 62% mark obviously would have triggered the contractual clause, but we wanted to compensate you for the short, the 12% of the megawatt hour's not achieved and the 38% of the kilowatts not achieved. And I hope I did that math correctly in my head. Any accountants in the room can verify. Yes, and then, so with that, and this is a little bit of a moving needle and some giving you an estimate with a range, but I wanted you to give us a sense, the order of magnitude of the dollar amounts. We're looking at between a $90,000 to $120,000 payment in compensation back to the city of Napoleon for what we call that underperformance.
When you say that is received by Napoleon, does it go directly on our AMP bill, or how do we receive that?
Steve?
Okay, thank you.
That payable to you.
To me. He said to me.
I want to clarify.
We'll have to check the tape later.
That estimate's a lot. Okay, so sorry, let me, that's a bit of, you know, I know that's new information. I also think it's good information, but I want to share. Let me pause there. Any questions about the mechanics? There is some fun and complicated math. I call it fun because that's the kind of person that I am behind those calculations. If somebody, Kevin, you want to understand?
You and Kevin can talk about that later.
But I'm happy to be transparent about that. It just doesn't make for an interesting, remember I said I was trying to limit boredom at the beginning? Okay. So, when do you renew for your next contract? Here are the terms and benefits that we're looking at. So monthly cost, a little over $21,000. Three-year cost of $761, all rounded, $1,000. These numbers are not radically different from your last contract cycle. Megawatt hour goal is roughly similar, $2,300. Three-year kilowatt goal, $521. This time, we're going to knock it out of the park, make that last cycle a distant memory. But one thing I want to talk about real quickly is that avoided cost number is jumping up. You'll notice, I think we said, what did I say, 1.4? Last one. Part of that value isn't just from the savings, you know, assuming we achieve 100%. Yeah, that's part of it. But the other part of that is the rising cost of energy that you're facing if you need to get it elsewhere. So now you'll see that return on investment number is jumping up. So that's one of the things that that, those market conditions for those prices are doing to the decision-making landscape. It makes my job a little bit easier. I did include the next slide, a lot of numbers and words. It is the menu of services. I did it just to be fully transparent about how we determine our goals and how we determine our rates. Again, happy to answer questions about it, but it does not make for a riveting read. However, if you'd like to know, it's all there. And so again, just want to land where I started. Why do we recommend Efficiency Smart? It's an affordable way to meet your power supply needs, delivers high levels of customer satisfaction through effective customer engagement, and it results in positive economic development tools for your community. And that's, I think, the only, the last slide just has information about how to contact us, which you're welcome to use if you have questions later. But if you have questions now, I am happy to answer them.
I do have another question. So when you were showing us the slide with the building relationships progressing beyond lighting?
Yeah.
And the huge increase there, it looks like in 2022 with non-lighting things?
Slide 13.
Would that be because of a lot of people during the pandemic ended up redoing kitchens and re-getting new washers, dryers?
It's, yeah, very much so. Actually, we saw, not surprisingly, during 2020 in particular, a home improvement fascination. I can't wait to imagine what drove that. Turns out, people spending a lot of time in their homes motivates a lot of home improvement work, and having a little bit more time there probably does it too. So yes, we actually, our rebates for home appliances, refrigerators, all that good stuff, they went up pretty significantly as well. But really, I mean, I think part of really what's driving this is also our relationships that we have with local businesses. Like I said, as we're able, and Joey's able, I want to give credit where credit is due, you know, as we're able to build more trust with folks, you know, they seem, "Okay, I did that lighting project. In fact, I just did that front room. We tried it out. It worked pretty easily. And now we're saving some energy, and I like the lights. They're nice. Okay, let's, you know, let's do a little deeper." So, you know, and they start doing more projects with us. Then they'll start, they'll get to the point where they won't consider a project without calling us. You know, or they'll ask us to come be involved in their planning process. So, you know, I think there's, you know, that's what's driving a lot of this, is a willingness, because it takes a level of trust if you're going to do a compressed air system in an industrial facility. That's an integral part of production. If you're going to ask somebody to stall production for a few days while you change something out, they better have a high degree of confidence that it's going to pay off, that it's going to return their investment. And now that we've built that trust, we're able to make those recommendations, they will follow them, and they will realize those benefits. You, but you can imagine, if I were approaching your company for the first time, you're just meeting me, and I say, "Hey, shut down production for a week so we can change this. It's going to be worth it." That's going to be a harder, it's just not a level of trust we tend to grant. I don't think so.
How do you reach out to our business customers? Is it like directly from you guys, or do you work with the CIC or?
Good question. Both, both of the above. I'm really, work really closely with the Hammond County CIC, and then I just knock on doors and make a lot of phone calls.
Okay.
And if you all, you know, when we start program cycles, we'll work with the city to find out, you know, who the biggest users are. Are there folks facing challenges? Do you know there are folks who are, you know, struggling to control costs and remain competitive? You know, we can help them out. Are there folks who are confused about something like power factor? Do we need to send an engineer out there to help them better understand it? And those sorts of things. So it can happen in any number of ways. You know, sometimes going to eat at a restaurant and talking to somebody. But there are a lot of different ways that we can get involved, but we're open to those. It's not, we're not very restrictive in that. If it works for you guys, it works for us.
One thing I just want to add to that, in terms of personal experience that you, you know, you had as a city, I've been working with Chad on your wastewater treatment plan, and maybe you could share some information about, you know, where initially, we look at the design documents and we're looking to verify, is there anything that we see in terms of operationally that we can call out? And, you know, that's kind of where we started. And as the project progresses, we look at the various component systems and component parts. And, you know, Chad, maybe you can share a little of your experience in terms of?
Yeah, we worked with you on the wastewater plant as well as the water plant, reviewed the plans. They give us some input as to whether or not certain components might be oversized or not, whether or not we can control some of the power needs with items by adding, say, variable frequency drives. You've heard us talk about VFDs. It's a variable frequency drive. Without it, a pump is on or off. A variable frequency drive slowly ramps it up, or soft starts. And they review all the plans, see if there's any places we need to add those that we didn't have incorporated. Now, on the wastewater plant, we didn't find a lot, but we definitely had a couple of small items, but that could add up over time.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for Sean?
When I first got on City Council, I sat by Jim Herschberger, and he looked at me at the first council meeting and said, "You know, a lot of this is just common sense. If we can spend $700 and get $2.1 million with the savings back for over three years, I'm sorry, it's a common sense thing." That's pretty, pretty simple math. I liked your point about the, demonstrates utility's investment back in the community. We fight that sometimes, that, you know, why isn't Napoleon and the community? And I think this is a great reason to show one of the value adds that we can bring that everybody can. So I think it's a really good, it's a good get for us.
You know, and that's a great point. One of the, it was really fun, I think it was last week, I got to read one of the comments from the, I told you about the new customer surveys. And one of them, full disclosure, wasn't in the city of Napoleon, but one of our community participants said, one of the residents said that after participating, they were proud of their village for offering this program. And that, I mean, that's just a, that's a pretty cool feeling to me, too. It tells us, you know, we value, this work is meaningful to us, and the help that we're able to give means something to us. And so to hear that back, and that is that demonstration. We've talked at these public power conferences, and one of the hardest things about public power is telling the story. Why is it so important? Why is it so valuable? As a person who's unfortunately one street away from my local public power utility, I can tell you a little bit about that. But I hope that in our work, one of our goals is to help you to be, to be a voice of why public power. You know, because that's an investment you cannot get from an investor-owned utility. In fact, now you can't actually get it from your investor-owned utility. So it does speak to what the value that you bring is.
Without reading all the documents, so if we choose to renew again, when do we need to have that submitted back to you?
Well, technically, the contract ends on December 31st of this year. You know, we can do whatever we need to. I think we've given you copies of draft contracts.
Yes, I have those.
Okay.
So it all depends on what your approval process, which you need to do, and how we can help support that. But, you know, hey, let's knock it out before Thanksgiving. So, but whatever, honestly, you need to do to, I don't know if you need any more readings or how it works, but.
It's, Council President, it's in our, good for the Sadi discussion action.
Okay, yeah.
So if it gets voted on tonight, it gets sent to legal, and then you could have three reads. And three reads is enough for, if you want three reads, to have it completed by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right. No other questions? Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Julie, thank you for making the trip here. Appreciate the presentation.
Happy to, it's good to come back.
Have a safe trip back.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome. Hey, moving on to item E, approval of minutes from October 3rd, 2022, regular council meeting. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. Hearing none, they stand approved. Item F, citizen communication. If there's anyone in the audience or on WebEx that would like to address council of something that is not on the agenda, can walk up to the podium now or type it in the chat, and we will check that periodically. Item G, reports from council committees. Item G1, the Water Sewer Refuge Recycling and Litter Committee did not meet on October 10th, 2022 due to the lack of agenda items. G2, the Municipal Property Building Land Use and Economic Development Committee did not meet on October 10th due to lack of agenda items. And G3, the Personnel Committee, Committee met on October 11th at 7:15 a.m.
We went to executive session to consider employment employee. We'll have a little more to discuss later in the meeting, but no action was taken at that, at our Personnel Committee meeting.
Thank you. And G4, the Elections Committee did not hold their special meeting on October 11th, 2022 due to being canceled by the chair. And G5, the Parks and Rec Committee did not meet on October 17th, 2022 due to lack of agenda items. Moving on to item I, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions. Resolution number 057-22, a resolution authorizing amendments to the previously executed Community Reinvestment Area CRA Agreement with Keller Logistics Incorporated within Napoleon CRA Number 7 and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Chad, and welcome, by the way.
Well, thank you. This resolution modifies the, the one that you had a year ago. It reassigns the CRA from Keller Logistics Group Incorporated to Keller Napoyne Industrial Properties LLC, just a change of name. It increases the square footage of the project from 100,000 square feet to 150,000 square feet, and it also modified their commence date to September 6th. Other than that, everything stayed the same. I spoke with Jen at the CIC, they're on board with it, they're hoping to get this moving forward. She did not give me a date when they expect to be moved in dirt, however.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that one, we'll be moving on to second read. I2, ordinance number 058-22, an ordinance amending certain sections of the City of Napoleon Personnel Code, specifically Section 197.14D8. Overtime basic rate, Section 197.16F1. Effects of vacations and days off on city observed legal holidays, and Section 197.14D5, minimum call-out time. Also amending the City of Napoleon Employment Policy Manual, specifically Policy 4.4. Effects of time off on ability to earn overtime pay. Your motion.
Motion.
Second.
Hey, Chad.
Yes, this came out of the Safety and Human Resources Committee. It was recommended to modify the Personnel Code and the Employee, Employment Policy Manual. Right now, the non-bargaining employees receive overtime based on a 40-hour week. This would change that to an eight-hour day. Do you want to elaborate on some of the specifics?
Yeah, so when it comes to certain individuals in positions within the city, if they, for example, and I'll use Aaron as an example, because he's back here. Aaron worked late one night with a contractor and had to stay until almost midnight one night, and then the city closed that Friday due to weather that came through. Because the city building was closed, Aaron lost out on all that overtime and only got paid straight time for those instances. With that being said, it's different things like that, or if a holiday falls during the week and he's stuck with a contractor because he has to be out there for the time that that contractor's here until they leave, he ends up losing out on overtime and has to take it for straight pay. So the purpose of changing it to day-wise was to, one, help certain individuals that do end up having to stay with their approval from their department head ahead of time. They could say, get paid that, and then if something happened later on down the week where the city building closed or a holiday was observed, they still get paid that overtime for anything beyond those eight hours within that day. Just going back to that, of course, the way all of our overtime sits right now has to be with prior approval or on an emergency basis. They can't just run them up through the city and take all the overtime they want. So this helps individuals like Aaron or certain lieutenants that currently work for the police department. It could then help Kevin when it comes to tax season, when the girls have to stay late on days for tax season or coming on the weekend. It also helps with different things with payroll or end-of-the-year budgets when it comes to Kim finalizing all of those different items when we have holidays up all during that week. So it kind of just helps with those different situations.
And you can see here, we added the verbiage must be approved by department head that had come in as a request. Pyramiding will not be allowed, which we have that in all of our contracts as well. And then the eight continuous hours. And then paid leave will include personal time off. Right now, if, oh, if we, it happens more frequently in the police department, we'll have one of the lieutenants off, and they'll try to cover a shift for someone, and it'll be in the same week that they had scheduled a day off, and they'll end up and have to work all that time at straight time. So this modifies that issue. The vast majority of the effect will be on the lieutenants and the engineering field staff.
Altogether, how many employees does this?
It would be all of the non-bargaining hourly employees, which.
Council President, I would say it'd probably be like under 10 people.
Okay.
Yeah. We ran a report, Ross asked for a report on estimated cost. What we could find from January 1 to October 7th, the cost would have been about just shy under $3,000 that we would have paid out in overtime. I would say it's a little higher than that because it's hard to attribute the police lieutenants that would, would not pick up a shift because they know they weren't going to get overtime. So there would be an additional expense to that. But it does take care of some of these loopholes, much like Brittany was discussing. And I can just say, in my department, in the one time a year that we would have any overtime was this last tax season, also fell around the, the Easter holiday. So I had individuals coming in on Saturday, and individuals who stayed late till 6 o'clock so that we could be a service to community. None of them got paid overtime for that, because we had that Friday off.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just a taking care of your people issue. This is a better way to take care of our people.
And just in general, I mean, I know there's been some issues, especially within the police department, where some of these lieutenants did not want to, you know, some of these people that could move up to lieutenant, let me rephrase this, have not wanted to do it because of this particular reason. And I know within the police department, we're going to have to have some moves in the near future. So I think this is important in that aspect, too.
Right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, hearing none, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
All right, that will move on to second read. Next is I3, ordinance number 059-22, an ordinance amending ordinance number 053-21 regarding compensation of the Napoleon Municipal Court bailiff for the year 2023 and declaring an emergency. Have a motion?
So.
Second.
All right. Chad?
Yes, this ordinance was brought forward just to bring the municipal court bailiff closer to the salaries of other comparable municipalities. The hope was to get this, it was, it was brought by Judge Schuler in the hopes that we could get this in effect the first of the year. HR had done some research and compiled some numbers on some neighboring communities, and this would reflect the wages, basically in the middle. We wouldn't be the top, but right now, we're near the bottom. If you note, in Section 4, the municipal court judge may adjust the municipal court bailiff salary at any time so long as within the limits. Would not be able to go outside those limits without approval of council. Judge, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, just with the current ordinance, I can't give the bailiff a raise even if I wanted to. My job descriptions, I think you all have the job description. The last job description was done in 2014. We've updated that job description to 2022. Things have changed dramatically, obviously, especially with COVID. There's a lot more technology that's involved now, and he's also in charge of that. Recording, getting CCRL, getting inmates on video. He's in charge of all of that. So we've also been here previously, as the Human Resource and Safety Committee knows. My behalf's been operating on his own since last November. And so he's been doing everything that's needed without my part-time person, which just started today. But he does a really good job in employee retention, good employee retention is important. And so just seeking to adjust the pay scale, pay limit scale, to keep him in line with what other municipalities are offering.
Thank you.
And there has been a fair amount of turnover out there, and it's been because of the salary.
Any questions or comments?
If I may, I think salary across the board is something that we found, especially during contract negotiations, that we're going to have to position ourselves to be competitive with other municipalities. And right now, we may be behind the eight ball. My hang-up here is the timing of this request with budget less than a month away. Why we couldn't wait till then, I understand it wouldn't be in effect until the first of the year. But I think that we're going to have to review compensation for all positions, not just the bailiff. So why not wait until budget when we can do an overall review?
So it seems like the review was done as far as wages go. By HR as previously described, and so the information is already in front of you.
The purpose of setting this up now is, or Judge Schuler, when she's going to set up her budget for next year, she knows she can already account for those funds for this individual person. I know one of the concerns I've heard, and my apologies for not being here last council, was, is he going to automatically go to the top of the scale, and he's not? So he currently sits at the top of his scale where he's at now. So he's maxed out completely. The purpose of opening up the upper end and leaving the lower end where it's at is because, for example, because Sarah, who just started as the part-time, if anything, heaven forbid, happens to Sean and she got that position, we can still start her out at the lower end because she doesn't have much experience. Opening it up for Sean allows the judge to put in those proper steps for him to be able to reach, you know, possibly the potential of a high, but it just helps space everything out. So I know that was one of the concerns, is he going to go immediately up to the top? He's not. But it was to give her the ability to, for budget, figure out where he needs to be and what those steps need to be. So when she comes with her budget, she has that laid out for you versus waiting until the last minute and then having to figure that out after the fact.
Thank you. I think that was a, a good question. I mean, since we are so close, and I guess I wouldn't want to see setting a precedent that before budget, doing this, multiple departments or different areas. Hopefully, that's not going to happen in the future. But obviously, there's a need, need for this sooner than later. It sounds like you want to take care of the person that's been working pretty hard for the last year on his own. Anybody else have any questions?
I'm also changing the job description, updating the job description, that's the other part, too, that obviously needs to get done, so.
So Council President, just for clarification, this gets passed, this does not come into effect until 2023.
Correct.
So it's not, I don't believe the intention is, is that he gets a raise, that person gets a raise next week, and then another one the following.
Right.
Because the way I read the ordinance is that it's effective at 2023.
Correct. Okay. There's no questions or comments? Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross? Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Okay, that will move on to second read. We have item I4, resolution number 060-22, a resolution approving the provisions of a certain collective bargaining agreement, number 2022 MED 080736 between the City of Napoleon and Local 240 Napoleon Police Officers Association, IUPA AFL CIO, for the term commencing from December 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2025, authorizing the city manager to execute the same and declaring an emergency. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Chad?
With this being the negotiated union contract, and I was not a part of those negotiations, Brittany has volunteered to present those to you.
So just like every other contract that you guys have gone through, there are some pros and some cons to it. I have to say, just the seamlessness of what was said. Chief Mack did a really good job working very closely with the union to come to the forefront of what their issues were to help stop them ahead of time. So when we went into contract, it was a one-day deal in and out. With that comes just different impacts. So we had, of course, housekeeping items that came across the board, and then we had some other items. But if I had to hit the top three, of course, wages is one of them that we did talk about. Educational benefits, and then scheduled the city observed legal holidays, which goes with the, we added more of the verbiage in that if we observe any more legal holidays, they automatically get built into the contract. Those are the only things that we could find that actually had a dollar amount impact attached to them. When it came to the holidays, it was just possibly of a potential overtime piece that could happen. We don't really know what that would be. It would just depend on the schedules that's laid out for that year. And then educational benefits, we see an impact of about $5,000 for the contract that we see could possibly come from the educational benefits that were changed. And that was just changing some amounts that encourages the individuals to go back to school to better themselves, not only for their career path, but for the police department as well, so that they could grow into positions internally. And then, of course, with wages, the way we have it laid out is that the city has proposed an agreement with the union to do a 5-3-3 across the board for the next three years.
Thank you, Brittany. Anybody have any questions, comments regarding this? Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross? Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Davis?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Okay, that will be moving on to second read also. Item I5 is resolution number 061-22, a resolution approving the provisions of a certain collective bargaining agreement, number. provisions of a certain collective bargaining agreement, number 2022 MED dash zero eight dash zero seven 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 between the City of Napoleon and Local 3363 International Association of Firefighters for the term commencing from January first, 2023 through December thirtieth, 2025, authorizing the city manager to execute the same and declaring an emergency.
Make a motion.
Second.
Third.
Chad.
Yes, once again, this is the fire contract, which I also was not a part of this one. So Brittany.
Same thing with fires, it wasn't the police, very seamless. Chief O'Brien was really good, just like Chief Mack, and working closely with the fire union to make sure that we had things across the board ahead of time, so we knew what we were going to be working with. The impacts that I would like to point out that had money tied to them, of course, once again, was the legal holidays for potential overtime, depending on how the schedule fell. Acting time, we changed this piece and we asked Captain Bowen to try to give us a good estimate of potential money attached to it, which would be $2,500 a year that you could see. And this sets up for the individuals who have to act as a captain in that aspect, or captain who has to act as an assistant chief or chief, depending on that. Right now, captains get a 10% bump, so that's kind of what we justified it off of, was to go with that. So if we have an individual on the line who has to act as a captain, he gets that 10% increase. Then we also looked at wages, of course. One other thing I would like to point out was that we changed scheduling of vacations because right now it's set at a 24-hour that they have to take off, which causes the department to then have to provide overtime for that whole 24 hours. We adjusted that down so that they could take it in 12-hour increments, which could in the long run decrease overtime if that individual could work the second half of their shift versus being out for the whole day. So when it came to wages, same thing with police, we did a five-three-three across the board for the next three years.
Thank you, Brittany. Any questions or comments on this one?
I just think it's really great that we had two union negotiations that were really not contentious that we heard, that we heard on our side, that it's one of the easier ones we've ever, that I've been a part of. So just, that's a good look, that's a good job to everybody involved. So the unions, you do a lot of communication before you get to the bargaining table, and you got that stuff done over the three years. You don't let it fester for three years and then have a lot of angst during the union negotiations.
I agree. Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
All right, that will be moving on to second read. Item I six, ordinance number zero six two dash two two, an ordinance appointing Chad Luff as acting city manager for the City of Napoleon, Ohio, beginning October seventh, 2022, and declaring an emergency, and suspension is requested.
Motion.
Second.
I think this is very self-explanatory here.
Per the charter, you have to have someone in that position. This would make it a temporary appointment, which I think everybody's working with the understanding that it would be revoked upon the hiring of a full-time person.
That's correct. Yes. And Chad, with your experience with, in the engineering and public works and everything you've done, and in the past years when maybe somebody was on vacation, or when our last city manager left and you stepped in, so appreciate all of your hard work, your knowledge you have for the community, and that's why, that's why you're chosen.
Somehow I became one of the old guys.
How about the wiser guys? How about that?
That sounds much better.
All right.
Motion for suspension.
Have you been here longer than Chief Mack?
I came in 2000, or 2006.
When'd you come, Chief Mack?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six? Okay.
He's the older old guy.
That's not why I asked that question. I just, there's just a lot of experience there that has lots of that since, since then, so, okay.
Motion for suspension.
Second. Okay, Marissa, please call the roll on suspension.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
All right, any other questions or comments?
With that said, I do believe Chief Mack and I are the same age, so.
Oh, yeah? All right, Marissa, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Ross.
Yes.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Lauren.
Thank you, Chad. Yes.
Thank you for trusting me.
That has passed on first read under suspension. All right, moving on to item J, second readings of ordinances and resolutions. Item J one, ordinance number zero five two dash two two, an ordinance authorizing the municipal bridge inspection program through ODOT. Have a motion?
So.
Second.
Hey, Chad, you know anything about this?
This one I do know. This was brought to us by ODOT requesting, or actually asking us if we wish to participate in the municipal bridge inspection program. What that program does is it fulfills our federal requirement to have our bridges inspected, but at the cost of the state rather than us covering that cost. They will randomly select a consultant, and usually that's by county. We don't know who it is, but they all have to be pre-qualified. So this is an opportunity for us to get our annual bridge inspections done at no cost to the city.
Do you want to weigh in saying it's common sense kind of thing again?
No.
Oh, okay.
We're good.
All right, any questions or comments? Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item J two, ordinance number zero five three dash two two, an ordinance authorizing the Ohio Department of Transportation to perform necessary work within the City of Napoleon, Ohio regarding the resurfacing and bridge repair project on State Route 110.
Motion.
Second.
All right. Chad.
Yes, this legislation will allow us to participate in the paving of State Route 110. The state of Ohio had come to me and announced they were planning to pave from 109 up to the city corporation limits. I approached ODOT and asked them if they would be willing to pave to State Route 108 or South Perry Street if we participated in the cost. They agreed this legislation allows that. Our portion of that cost has not been finalized, it's been estimated between $200 and $250,000. We will have that in the budget when we present the budget, but it allows us to get it done for less than half the cost of if we were to do it on our own. So 50 cents on the dollar money, it's almost like a grant, technically same effect, but I'd like to see us pave State Route 110.
Mayor? I think he wants to say it's common sense to do this.
A lot of it's common sense. A lot of it's just common sense, it is.
Right. All right, any questions or comments? Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
All right, that will move to third read. Item K, third readings of ordinances and resolutions. K one is ordinance number zero five zero dash two two, an ordinance amending certain sections of City of Napoleon Personnel Code, specifically Section 197.16 F3, schedule of observed legal holidays, also amending the City of Napoleon Employment Policy Manual, specifically Policy 14.3, Recognized Holidays.
Make a motion.
Second.
Chad.
This is the legislation that we've seen that would give us the holidays of Juneteenth and Veterans Day, both to be effective starting in 2023. That was all, you know, there wasn't anything else attached to this.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions or comments regarding this one?
Just one point to note, if this does pass, the contracts have clauses that would activate them in the contracts as well.
Okay. All right, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Dan, or Ross, Joe.
Thank, yep. Yes.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on third read. Hey, item K two, resolution number zero five one dash two two, a resolution approving the provisions of a certain collective bargaining agreement between the City of Napoleon, Ohio, and American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL CIO, Local 3859, for the term commencing from December first, 2022 through November thirtieth, 2025, authorizing the city manager to execute the same and declaring an emergency.
Motion.
Second.
Chad.
Nothing changed since the last read of this. This is the contract for ASME, which is our third contract in the city with police, fire, and ASME. So no changes since the last read.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
All right, that passed on third read. Item L, Good of the City. L one is discussion or action, review approval of the power supply cost adjustment factor for October 2022, PSCAF three, three-month average factor, zero point zero three three eight, and JV two is zero point four four zero six two seven. Chad.
I would like to defer to Kevin on these.
All right.
I would like to, council president, make a mention that I don't believe it's point zero three three eight, it's point zero one three three eight.
Okay.
And the JV two, I believe, is correct. But this is just the cost factor, we do a three-month rolling average. We have a pretty advanced formula that we use for that, and so we just ask that for the approval of point zero one three three eight and point four four zero six two seven for the JV two.
All right, do we need to make a motion to amend that, Billy?
There's nothing to, I mean, no, you just approve it as, as, as it's been described to you.
Okay. All right.
Make that motion.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ben, Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Lauren.
All right, good catch there, Kevin. Item L two, discussion or action to enter into a three-year agreement with Efficiency Smart. Obviously, we heard the presentation today, and I guess right now all we're looking for is to direct the law director to draft legislation, and then we can have three reads to discuss it further, unless you have anything else you want to add, Kevin?
Council president, the only thing else I have to add is that I do have the contract that was emailed to me earlier, and that I can get that to the city law director for their review and to have legislation enacted for you guys to do first read for the next, next meeting if you wish.
Okay. All right. Can I have a motion to direct the law director to draft legislation?
So moved. Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Dr. Dave.
Yes.
Molly.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
All right. Item L three, discussion or action, liquor permit application for St. Holt's McCarns Incorporated at 2269 Scott Street, Napoleon, Ohio. Chad.
This would be for the main stop. There's requests in council approval, I don't know. Chief Mack, do you have any issues with the main stop and the liquor permit?
This is another, another one of those where silence is acceptance.
Thank you. All right. Item L four, discussion or action, personnel committee update. Jason.
Yeah, so we've, we've met a couple of times as a personnel committee, and we've gotten, I think, 11 candidates in, we'd like to have a little deeper pool, so we'll continue to explore other avenues to maybe get a little deeper pool of where we are. So that's kind of where we're at with the personnel committee. That's kind of, yeah, that's, we've met, we're working, Brittany's doing a good job of shepherding us through the process, so that's where we're at with that. Just to have a big, have an idea of kind of what's going on.
All right, thank you. All right, item L five, discussion or action, potential procedure of hiring a new fire chief.
So as we start going along the avenue of hiring a new city manager, obviously, we also need a new fire chief, and there are steps that can go along. I think ideally, you know, we'd like to have a city manager in place to bring on a new fire chief, but at the same time, there are steps that we can do to hopefully provide a new city manager with a qualified pool of applicants, and Brittany can talk about this a whole lot more eloquently than I can, so.
So we're, we're gonna bring it to, and I was gonna wait for it to civil service, but we're gonna bring it to civil service tomorrow just to explain. So I am actually going to partner with the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association, so they have a very extensive process that they go through in order to look for fire chiefs. They'll come in, and I have a, a long overview of what the process looks like, but long story short, they'll come in, they will sit down with council, and they'll figure out from you guys, since we don't have a city manager, what are some qualities that you guys are looking for. They'll look at our job description, they'll talk to me, they'll talk to Chad, to kind of dig out all of those meaningful pieces that we need for our next fire chief. And then what they'll do is they will make recommendations to change the job description, or we'll leave it as is, and then we can go from there. Then what they do is they post the position, we post it on the certain spots that we need to. They will then gather all of the resumes, the resumes will go straight to them as a whole, they will funnel through them, they will give us a one-page narrative on each person, going over their qualifications, their background checks, their employment, different things that they pull out and they do in their investigations of each individual person. They'll recommend six people that can compete in what's called an assessment center. Of those six people, for example, if none of them are internal candidates that we have, we can then pick and choose who we want as those six individuals. So if we decide that we want to pick two internal candidates and remove two current candidates, or we can add more to the process and go more than six if we want to, they just recommend six at most. And then they go through an assessment center that puts them through real-life incidents, incidents that could range from super easy to very extremely hard, to see what their response is to those. So press releases, being incident command on a large structure fire and having to walk through that whole situation, it would not be any of us internally doing it, it would be fire chiefs from across the state of Ohio that will be the ones that are on their panel that are judging them for these things, so people who know what they're doing and know what that response needs to be. And then after that, they will provide the top three names of the individuals who pass the assessment center, who then give to us to recommend who to hire. Of course, they'll give us all the scores for the individuals who go through the assessment center, so if we decide that we don't want one of those three, we want somebody else, we get to choose who we want out of that whole panel. But it at least puts them through an extensive understanding of what we want for our fire chiefs and really holds them to see if they're compatible or not for that position.
Thank you for that information. Now, did you just learn all of this through this process or from your previous?
Previous. Previous.
That's awesome, so, thank you, that's.
I was gonna say Clayton helped me a lot with it and everything that they have going on there. The Police Chiefs Association has the same thing, too.
That's awesome. Thank you for that explanation.
Obviously, the civil service has to agree to it first before, you know, we'll go, but that's kind of the process, I think, and there is a cost to it, but I think in my estimate, Brittany, it's under ten thousand dollars, right? So it's under ten thousand dollars, and what you're paying for is a service that you're gonna get, hopefully get three really quality candidates, and hopefully, you know, either give us or the new city manager one heck of a great choice of can't go wrong with, you know, with any three candidates, so. Um, and if the new city manager came in on, you know, say January to have a fire chief, they probably can start their process anyways to figure out the, the best way to go, so. If we can do it concurrently, we'll figure out the, the timeline as we go forward. That's, I think, to me, it makes a lot of sense to do that, so. Appreciate Brittany and Chief O'Brien, you know, doing that, trying to get that kind of ball rolling for us.
All right, anybody else have any questions or comments regarding this?
Sounds like a way to go.
All right, move on to item L-six, uh, discussion or action, yard waste site, a hundred-dollar donation. Chad?
Um, an individual from Outland County, uh, stopped up front a few days ago, or later last week, and, uh, he has a permit to use the yard waste site, but he really likes the facility, he really likes the service, and he asked if he could make a hundred-dollar donation. He would like to stay anonymous. Uh, we told him that would be fine, and this is just to accept that donation.
Awesome, that's great. Um, now, is there any plans, like what would you use that hundred dollars for, or do you just go?
Were you just putting it in the?
We put it in the sanitation fund. Uh, there's nothing that was earmarked for it. He didn't ask for it to be earmarked for it. It's just a matter that he pays his, his fee, and he feel that the value he's getting out of it is a lot more than what he paid, so he gave the donation of a hundred.
I doubt that that's a place and we, we really want to put a bench or anything to sit out there and, and, you know, enjoy that, that smell up there.
Deer watch.
That's true.
The, um, with the storms you had this year, there seems like there's a larger pile than usual of mulch.
There's a very large pile. Uh, generally, we will contract with Tawa to dispose of some of that. Um, I believe we discussed a few weeks ago, uh, they had a few trucks on fire, and we assisted with putting that fire out, but both, uh, the fire department and, uh, the operations department. So they're going to give us a real good deal on anything we need to have hauled out. But we have had a lot more, uh, to grind this year.
Right.
Uh, the cost was up, um, and we still haven't removed all of the storm-damaged trees from this past storm. We just had, received the quote for removal of those trees tonight. Uh, forwarded it to you. Uh, but there has been quite a bit.
So if someone doesn't live in town and wants to get mulch, they gotta get a permit from us, right?
The, the permit for a, an individual is sixty dollars, and correct me if I'm wrong, a commercial permit's two hundred?
Yeah.
Uh, but yes, if you're not within the city, uh, you have to get a permit to haul mulch.
That's for a whole year?
Yes, uh, calendar year.
Calendar year.
Yes.
Okay. So it should be some good mulch. If you start sixty bucks in twenty-twenty-three, there'd be a lot of mulch there yet.
Yeah.
For that spring landscaping, yeah.
We, I personally got a permit and got some myself, so it's, it's good stuff.
It's good stuff, yeah. I know we, we trucked to people inside town for a small cost and.
Yes, um, I would have to look up what the cost is to haul it.
Fifteen dollars maybe for a small load and.
It's not that much.
Twenty-five or something.
One heck of a deal to have a bunch of stuff dropped off in front of your board.
Yep.
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, could I have a motion to accept this donation?
Motion.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, let's go around the table here, and, uh, we'll start with, uh, with Chad.
Oh, um, just thank you to council for having faith in me serving as acting, you know, while we search for a new city manager. Aside from that, the only thing I have is, uh, just a reminder that Witch's Brew is this Saturday. So anyone wants to come out and be a part of that, please do. See, it's a good community event.
Thank you. It's gonna be beautiful weather, too, I think.
I don't look that far ahead.
I do. It's like low to mid-seventies. Yes, have that on my calendar. Hey, Billy?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right, Dr. Dave?
Nothing for me?
Ken?
The, uh, slope going down at the boat ramp site really looks nice. We cleaned that up a whole bunch.
Yeah.
Did a good job.
Good to hear.
That's all I have.
Hey, Dan?
Nothing, sir.
Uh, Jason?
Chad, you don't understand. You've been here long enough that trust is not given, it's earned, and you've earned it. That's why you're sitting there. Sure appreciate that.
I appreciate it.
Um, I know that Joel spent some time on Tuesday morning talking with Dave Clark from the radio station. He may call you. That's okay?
That'd be fine. I spoke to him last week. He was asking about where some of our projects stood, and I told Dave, if he has any questions, please reach out.
Okay. Um, CIC annual meeting is Thursday, five to seven at leisure time, right?
That's correct.
Most of us have signed up to spend some time at leisure time on Thursday, okay. Um, do we know when boat docks have to be out of the water, or when our boat docks are getting pulled?
I have not heard from Tony when he's planning to do that. Um, we have a couple of different individuals we have to coordinate around, uh, both in parks and operations. Uh, it's, I would imagine that's coming up here soon.
Okay.
And they'll leave the one in for an extended period of time for the duck hunters.
Right. I understand, you know, it's gonna be seventy on, on Sunday or Saturday this weekend, like, nice day for a fall boat ride, but I'm not sure. It's also days like this when you have not seventy outside, and nobody wants to be on the river, so. I know the Point area schools has something on their agenda for Wednesday in regards to the agreement they have with CCHC. I don't know if we put on discussion action for next meeting, or what we want to do, if we want to, you know, side with the school on this issue, or, or what we want to do. That's kind of where I'd like to be, is just have something on, uh, because next council meeting isn't till November the seventh, so we have basically three weeks here. Can we put something on the agenda for that or not, that, you know, we're with, with the school, or, I don't know what you guys want to think about that.
Let's see how they, um, how that meeting goes, and after that, then we can.
We can see. Hopefully, then we'll have some resolution, too, about the, the Brownfield grant, because I haven't heard anything about that yet, either.
Haven't heard anything back.
So, um, just, it's kind of a mammoth little thing, so, that's what I had.
All right, thank you. Um, Kevin, do you have an update from the text that I sent you yesterday? Is it something that you want to discuss a little bit and?
Well, yeah, I could bring that up. Um, so on social media, this past weekend, there was issues that was brought forward that, uh, emails that people received stating that their bill was past due. Um, that was certainly addressed this morning. We did switch over to a new company called Invoice Cloud. The company is supposed to give us more options and to better outreach to our, uh, customers to make sure that they could pay, um, in more ways than one. And that was not supposed to be sent out yesterday, or on Saturday, whatever day it was sent out, because the emails that were sent out were to people that had passed due, that says past due. Actually, the due date is today. Um, that was addressed with Invoice Cloud and the mistake that they made. Um, we were sure that will not happen again, and that, that will be fixed moving forward. Basically, what's gonna happen for those that we have email addresses, about the first of every month, they will receive an email reminder of that their bill is out there and can be paid, and then we have it set for moving forward around the twenty-sixth or the twenty-seventh of each month. There'll be an email reminder of those who have not paid. We'll receive one that states that their bill is past due at that time, because anything that's technically received after today is past due, and then at that point, they will be state that they would be shut, subject to shut off with that.
Still, still sending stuff, good old snail mail, too, right?
It is also, we only send the emails to those that we have email addresses, which we don't have majority of them. Um, and what, they will still receive that paper bill if they wish to. Majority of them will. What this offers is a easier way for some people to pay. Some people will take advantage of it, some people won't. They could ACH their payment that automatically comes out, and then, you know, they, they can actually stop it at any time that they want to. But the program overall is a good step for us. It was just, uh, an unfortunate mistake that was made this one time, and again, we hope that it doesn't happen again.
Great, thank you. Appreciate you looking into that and explaining that for us. I don't have anything else. Ross?
Uh, just a couple of things. Obviously, in Tuesday's paper, I believe, we saw that the City of Oregon is getting Chief, uh, O'Brien. Sad to see you go, Chief. Bucking grass to you. We're gonna miss you a lot. Um, secondly, the employee golf outing was about a week and a half ago. I just want to give kudos to Brittany. Uh, great job putting that on. I think everything went smoothly, and it was a great time. Always fun to connect with everyone working for the city, so, thank you.
Lori?
Um, I guess I'll just ditto everything that Ross just said. We'll miss you, Clayton. Uh, we had a great time at the golf outing, and the chili was good, so, um, glad to have the opportunity to get together with all the staff for that. And also ditto Chad over there. The, uh, Witch's Brew is for a really great cause to support CASA, and so I hope people will come out and participate. That's it.
Thank you. Molly?
Nothing, thank you.
Kevin?
I just want to follow up again that the CIC event is, uh, this Thursday. We do have a table. Um, I have the list of everyone that's RSVP'd that's here, so if you're not sure if you were on the list, come see me afterwards. Uh, the only thing else that I'll just mention is that, uh, the first week of October, which council met on October third, kudos to our operations crews. They had pretty good weather, which is very fortunate for the unlimited pickup. They did not get too far behind. They were able to get everything completed by the week, um, and I can not report any issues that they've had. So there was a few places that had an enormous amount of stuff to pick up, uh, as usual, but, uh, you know, that is a task. That is a task that, uh, we do a service to the community twice a year, and, uh, I, I, I think, uh, people don't realize how much of that task it, it takes. It takes a lot of people to get that done, so.
We will have a memo, uh, on the totals, uh, in your next packet.
That's it?
Just one quick point. I apologize. There was a question in the chat, uh, whether sick time or approved paid time off was, uh, would allow you to have overtime. The way the code is written currently, it does not. The legislation that is being proposed will modify that for non-bargaining. But that question came up, and we missed that question earlier, so I just wanted to address that.
Okay. Great, thank you. And, um, wow, it's, this is the first meeting without Joel, and we don't have an executive session. I don't know if that's a coincidence or not. I may have to call him about that.
Before eight-thirty.
Right, um, okay, item N, approved payment of bills and financial reports. In the absence of any objections or corrections, payment of bills and financial reports shall stand approved. They stand approved. I have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Hey, Marissa, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Dr. Dave?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.